Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Planning Commission meeting to order. Tom, if you would like to do roll call. So everybody's here except Mr. Manning? Okay, thank you. Everyone should have received the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any corrections or questions? I have a motion from Dale to accept the minutes. Do I have a second? From David, second from David Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign?
Epstein. I wasn't here, so Epstein.
Okay, so we're one abstention and eight approval. The first, we have a case for review is B twenty-two seventy-eight, request by Henry County Redevelopment Commission to rezone property at the southwest corner of County Road four hundred south and State Road three from general business and agricultural to light industrial. Part of the property under review is currently in the County Road four hundred south overlay district, which is largely zoned light industrial. So I'm gonna ask Corey Murphy to come up. And if you would push the button on the microphone, if it's red, if when it turns green, you will have a live mic.
It's green, thank you. I'm clearly not Corey Murphy. I'm Mara Hoff. I'm an attorney with DeFeveran here in Newcastle. We were informed last night of a potential issue with notice. We did our due diligence this morning, and there is a neighbor who was missed on the mailing list. So we are requesting a continuance in order to re-notice all the neighbors to make sure they are all aware of what we are requesting.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will ask, entertain a motion to table this until all notices can go out and everybody can, that needs to be here can be here. Do I have a motion to table? Motion by Dale, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cannon, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we do apologize.
And thank you for coming and recognizing that there was an issue. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to old business. Tom, do we have any old business?
Excuse me?
Uh, yes, sir.
Peter Deprez, I'm a resident out of-
Could you speak in your microphone, please?
Uh, Peter Deprez, D-E-P-R-E-Z. I'm a resident out at four hundred south. And several of us are here and interested in this petition. Do we know a date that it's either next regular scheduled plan commission meeting?
The process that, and Tom and the attorney can confirm what I'm getting ready to say or tell me that I'm wrong. You have, they have to go back through the notification process. It has to be ten days prior to the meeting, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So-
Do you, if you'll excuse me for a minute?
Yeah.
Do you have a requested date for the next hearing that you want to come to?
We don't have a specific request. We can have a notice, so it's tomorrow if he wishes us a meeting.
Okay.
I'm the one that brought the matter to the attention of counsel this morning, uh, last night. And as I explained to her, I'm out of state for the month of October. And so I asked courtesy that the matter be set over into sometime in the regular November meeting or December meeting. And I would make myself available on those dates. I checked with my neighbors. They're all available for the November and December meetings.
That's the first time I've been asked that question. So let me do this. Let us confer with our legal counsel for the planning commission, and can we get back to you? Because I, I don't, I don't know, I've never had anybody ask for us to defer that long. I mean, I, I guess I would just feel more comfortable talking to Sean and seeing what the proper procedures are, and then we can let you know.
Yeah, so you normally don't continue to the next regular scheduled meeting date?
Our next is the third, third Thursday of October.
Right.
So that's why I want to make sure that we're following proper procedures and protocols that says, yes, you can go ahead and defer it until November, December, because somebody has requested they can't be there. I don't know what the proper procedures or protocol is for that, because it's not come up since I've been on the planning commission. So I just want to make sure that we're following proper procedures and protocols. So we'll defer to our attorney. Tom will talk to him tomorrow. We should have an answer relatively quickly.
Would he be, would he be able to talk to me about that? Because I think I have got some, i- i- if there's any doubt in his mind, I'd like to talk to him about it. So if you could-
I'll, I'll have Tom talk to him about it. I, I can't answer for him.
I, 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 I understand.
Yeah.
I don't mean to, I don't want to put you-
I, I just want to make sure we're following all the proper procedures and protocols for when something like this happens. So I just want to defer to, um,
Okay.
our legal counsel.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Did I understand that this gentleman could not be here at our October meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so no, there's no old business?
No.
So under new business, we have consideration of requests by Henry County Development to establish three new TIF districts in Henry County. So now I will defer to Corey Murphy. Thank you all for, thank you all for coming. We appreciate you.
Sure. We can put these up on the wall, Corey. They'll have to show me all that stuff in the next few months. No, I don't think we have. It is, yeah. That's the cover page.
It's just on the, this PC, it's not on one of them. Please bear with me while I figure out how to do this.
All right.
There we go.
Yeah, he doesn't need to see that. So go to the first picture. I think I can, I think I can, just the down arrow. Can we have the whole screen if we do? I think that's probably, yeah, okay.
That was easier than what I thought it was.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Corey Murphy. I'm here on behalf of the redevelopment commission. From time to time, the redevelopment commission, which is a five-member board, uh, those members include Scott Hayes, John Madison, Chad Mallico, Paul Jansen, and David Gratner. I have a couple of members in the audience. Uh, from, from time to time, the redevelopment commission will go through what is known as a plan amendment process. And we last did this in twenty twenty-three. What is the process? A project must be in the plan for the RDC to consider participation or implementation. However, not all projects will be implemented. The plan, the plan amendment process, uh, is a lengthy process, no matter if there's one amendment or fifteen amendments. So when we go through the process, we try to be as comprehensive as possible due to the time and cost to initiate. Uh, the approval process includes the following. It's initiated by the redevelopment commission adopting a resolution. And then that resolution comes before this body uh, to see if the proposed amendments conform with the development plan of the county. And then your recommendation goes to the Board of County Commissioners. And then the, the RDC holds a public hearing. And then the issue goes back to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. So it is a five-step process by three different bodies, including a public hearing. Uh, the proposed plan amendments are as follows. Uh, create a new tax increment finance allocation area on ground owned by the RDC. Uh, that's the ninety-four acres. So that's number one, number two, and number three on the wall over there, maybe in your packet as well. Uh, that ground is owned by the RDC. This would allow tax increment finance as an economic development tool for this ground. The second amendment is to create a new TIF allocation area near our local airport. Uh, the local airport is on four hundred south, uh, east of State Road one oh three. Uh, this would make tax increment finance available as a financing tool to assist with the development of privately owned hangars uh, around the airport. That has been a goal of the airport for a number of years. We're not talking to anybody specifically at this time, but we know that the use of tax increment finance would be very helpful in any future conversation for the development of hangars. And in full disclosure, I am president of the Newcastle Board of Aviation. The third item is, and this was an idea generated by having an advanced conversation about these plans with the county commissioners. Um, I appeared before the, uh, I, I appeared before them in June or July and said, here's what we're thinking. Uh, let us know if you have any concerns or let us know if you have any ideas. And so the creation of a new allocation area around the new Lisbon I seventy interchange was an idea that came out of a conversation with the commissioners. Um, this is a, a proactive step. Once again, here, we're not talking to anybody specifically about development, but if development were to occur, tax increment finance is really our only tool available. In terms of its impact for taxpayers, the existing owners, there isn't any. Uh, it doesn't impact their tax rate. It doesn't add any cost to them. They will receive a notice uh, as a part of the process. If, if we did not send the notice or weren't required to send the notice, they wouldn't know their property was placed in the tax increment finance allocation area. Uh, so what I'm saying is the impact on the existing landowners, because every number there is a parcel and is owned by somebody or owned by an entity. It doesn't have an impact on, on them, although we will comply and, and invite them to the public hearing. Uh, the other two items, uh, adds to our acquisition list, and it essentially adds the parcels that were identified for the allocation areas to our acquisition list. And finally, we're, we're including language that will allow the redevelopment commission to consider participate, uh, participating in any ready funded projects. We don't know what those projects are at this point, because it's, we're still going through the approval process um, with the region and with the state of Indiana, but we want to be prepared, uh, in terms of local match that the redevelopment commission could consider participating. And finally, we're including language that allows the redevelopment commission to enter into an interlocal agreement with other redevelopment commissions across the county as it relates to housing, new residential development, essentially the sharing of resources to build houses in our community. You have a, you have a resolution, um, that was prepared by our, uh, special counsel from Ice Miller, Lisa Lee. That resolution says what I just explained. Um, I, I put it in layman's terms. The resolution is in legalese. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do any members have questions for Corey regarding this plan?
Hey, Corey, on the airport in this one, I assume the TIF areas are those that are highlighted or, or in yellow. I mean, the borders are in yellow, is that correct?
So I, initially I sent Tom one version, and then we made some changes. So yes, those seven parcels are being proposed to be placed into an allocation area. And also added to our acquisition list.
On, on the new Lisbon one, uh, number seventeen is Henry County Land Holding LLC. What, I don't understand what that is, do you?
Uh, neither do I. That was the owner identified by the county GIS beacon.
Yeah, it's an LLC that's named that. I know who the owner is, but I'm-
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd never heard of a term like that before.
Yeah, it's just the name of the company.
Tom, what page is the resolution on? We just received the notebook.
It is, it is right before the maps for the TIF districts. It says, order of the Henry County Plan Commission determining that the amending declaratory resolution, dot, 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 I won't. Uh, if I need to read the resolution, uh, into the record, I hope not, I can. There's a whole lot of parcel numbers in here. I can read it if necessary, but it's that document.
Oh, I found it, thank you. I just didn't see the word resolution. Now, now I do. That's quite lengthy.
Anybody else has any questions or comments? Marcia, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, not yet. They'll be notified, uh, when the redevelopment commission holds its public hearing. Will also publish in the newspaper. Will also publish in the newspaper, a legal notice announcing the public hearing.
Anybody else?
How large of a project is that gonna be to develop that Wilbur Wright intersection there? Is there close proximity to services?
No, there's none.
And, and this is to be proactive?
Yeah, I know. I was just curious.
No, no, it's gonna be, actually, the comment was made to Corey. It probably won't happen in my lifetime. I would love to see it happen in my lifetime, but to be proactive to, in case somebody, uh, was interested out of the blue with, uh, with that interchange, to just be proactive. So the odds of it happening in the next, it could, but I don't see it, foresee it happening in the next twenty years. But no, water and sewerhead does have to go out there.
How many total acres does that represent within all those yellow parcels? I mean, is this as big as the Cambridge City exits industrial park? If you have to add up, you don't need to. I just didn't know if you had to worry.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm adding. I was just gonna, simply gonna add all the acreage.
I didn't know if we were talking about two hundred acres, three hundred acres.
It's, one parcel is a hundred and eleven acres, hundred and forty-three.
Uh, we're talking about a lot more than two or three hundred acres then?
Yeah, you're probably looking around five hundred acres. Approximately five hundred acres.
And what's the situation at the airport? I mean, does it have the water and sewer? I mean, there's a complex out there. There's houses out there. There's a hangar out there. Are we talking about wild on water and sewer?
We wouldn't, uh, water and sewer is not a limiting factor at the airport as it relates to hangar development. The airport operates off a water well and a septic. So the, the, the TIF would be used as, as a, as an incentive uh, for a private entity to build a hangar. It wouldn't necessarily go to the extension of water and sewer.
Feel like if Boars Head wanted to build a hangar out there for their airplanes, somebody like that.
Or an existing user on the airfield now.
Like they do at Mount Comfort?
Yes.
About eight hundred acres at Wilbur Wright, so you know.
You must have, you must have used your calculator.
Just drew it out on the map.
Yeah.
You'd said earlier, Corey, that this would have no effect on what the landowners would pay, but it would definitely have an impact on increase of, uh, property taxes for the county. Well, I mean, it stays the same.
It, it does stay, it does stay the same. It's, it's, it's zero impact until something is built commercially.
And would this have the same twenty-year termination as other TIF districts or?
It would operate the same as, uh, whatever the statute allows. And I think the clock is now, the, the expiration is now twenty years.
Any intention to change that expiration?
I think there's an intention of the legislature to monkey with TIF every year, so.
Okay, hard telling.
From, from my perspective, no. Uh, but from the state legislator's perspective, maybe. But the impact to the county, from a fiscal perspective, there is not an impact unless a commercial structure is built in the allocation area. Then the increment or the increase, so the taxes paid off of the structure would then flow to the redevelopment commission. The taxes from whatever there is now is not captured, can't be captured, and continues to flow. And we're not taking the step to include residential in any of this. So that's why I can very clearly state that it's, there's, there's no impact unless a commercial structure is built.
My last question in the statement where you overviewed the five steps that are required at the very end, it talks about the two districts here plus the, the one in four hundred south. It says, if necessary, include language to provide for ready two-point-oh projects. To reiterate and strengthen the language about partnering. That's what you're talking about partnering with, what, Newcastle and Knightstown and, uh, Middleton? Can you give an update on ready two-point-oh?
So the regional steering committee met twice, and the regional staff forwarded a list to the state to be approved. Well, we were asked by the, members of the regional steering committee were asked by the regional staff not to disclose until the state approves.
Okay, I figured as much, but you confirmed what I figured.
Anybody have any other questions regarding the TIF districts and this, this plan?
I have one more question. Um, on the one on four hundred, um, on the, by the, pronounced Dubinger?
Yeah.
The, that row four hundred, who's gonna be responsible, the black pop it or widen it, or is it? I'm, I'm just curious, because I drove that road, and it looks like it's gonna eventually need some work.
Are you talking about four hundred south? Uh, so contingent on zoning be, being approved, we would market the Dubinger site for business investment and jobs. And when we receive the first interest to, to locate there, improving four hundred would be a part of the conversation. It would, I would imagine that it would look very similar to four hundred on the other side of Road three down to TS Tech. And that section of four hundred was improved as a result of TS Tech locating in the county in two thousand and seven. And any additional right-of-way would come from the redevelopment commission-owned ground. So we've thought about it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, her question prompted one. I know I said lastly, but, uh, somewhere in the, in these twenty pages that we got to review, it mentioned something that part of this ninety-four acres is in the overlay. Is that the, the part that's listed currently, zone currently is general business? Is that what's in the overlay, or is it different than, uh, the overlay?
So the way the County Road four hundred south overlay district was created as a result of, uh, Boars Head, uh, choosing Newcastle back in twenty fourteen and investing eighty million. choosing Newcastle back in 2014 and investing $80 million in their original plant. This Dubinger site, the overlay district kind of cuts that Dubinger site in half. The redevelopment commission is committed to observing and upholding the County Road 400 South overlay district, no matter what. If it's, if a project locates within the overlay district, we're going to comply with it. If it locates on that parcel, but it's outside of the overlay district, we're going to comply with it. And, and we'll make that commitment when you hold your hearing for the rezone. The last thing we want to do is from a practical standpoint, stepping back from the overlay district itself and your process regarding the overlay district. The last thing we want to do is to bring a conflicting use into the industrial park that would potentially hurt Boar's Head. And so that's why we can make that commitment and we're going to observe the overlay district. And observing the overlay district is you holding a hearing to confirm compliance with the overlay district. And as long as I'm involved in the negotiations, I always, I always talk to Boar's Head ahead of time before we ever schedule the hearing. I don't want to introduce a hearing where there's going to, you know, where they have an objection or a reasonable objection as it relates to air emissions. That's really the intent of the overlay district is to protect the area from harmful air emissions.
And we do have a copy of the overlay ordinance in our packet. Any other questions or comments? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay, with that said, do I have a motion to approve? To approve this resolution? I say I have a motion by Dale. Do I have a second? Second by Marcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dale. Seeing nothing on the itinerary. You're, you're up. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Motion is adjourned.